Anthony Jones.
Present.
Okay. So the first order of business is approval of minutes of the meeting of the... Well, first of all, I'll point Mr. Hilton as a voting member tonight. One, two, three, four. Approval of minutes of the meeting of the August 2nd, 2023 meeting. What's the wish of the board, Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as given to us. Thank you.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion second, any discussion on it? Alls in favor of approving the minutes, raise your right hand. Votes are...minutes are approved. Second order of business, number two, all business. A continuation from the September 6th, 2023 meeting, 85 Elm Street, Somersworth LLC and 20 Green Street, Somersworth LLC are seeking an appeal from administrative decision of the Historic District Commission dated June 28th, 2023 to deny the change in proposed building material for a property located 85 Elm Street and 20 Green Street in a business with historic overlay district. Assessors map 10, lots 177 and 176, ZBA case number 11, 2023.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself from this, being a HDC member. I'll sit this one out.
Very well. With Mr. Brooks recusing himself, I'll appoint Mr. Jones as a full voting member. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Mears.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is appealing the June 28th, 2023 decision made by the Historic District Commission. The HDC denied the application for an amendment to the Certificate of Appropriateness to add additional residential units, remove underground parking and alter exterior building materials for the following reasons. Change in the proposed material resulting in the absence of brick as previously approved and the removal of brick would not fit in character of the area. You should have all received the history regarding this project. This has been before the Historic District a number of times. It went before 8/25/2022 for a conceptual review for the multifamily development, 9/28/2022 for a conceptual review, 10/26/2022 for a conceptual review, 11/18/2022 for a site walk of the property, 11/20/22 the application for Certificate of Appropriateness to construct a new 128-unit building and demolish three structures was approved with the request to demo structures at 20 Green Street and approved the request to demo the servants' quarters structure and six-bay garage building at 85 Elm Street with the following conditions. Applicant shall display in the lobby provided copies for the city and Somersworth Historical Society drawings done to scale and floor plans along with pictures of the facade of the servants' quarters building. The applicant shall allow the Somersworth Historical Society access to the building before the demo is completed to collect any items. And approved the request to construct 128-unit apartment building with the following conditions. The brick shall be changed to a darker waterstruck brick. The flat cement shall be stamped concrete to mimic stone in finish and scale. This did go before the planning board on February 15th, 2023. The application for site plan approval for 128 units for multifamily development and infrastructure was continued. It went back in March 15th, 2023, application for site plan approval for 128 units, multifamily development and infrastructure was approved with the following conditions. And it also went back to the planning board, 6/21/2023, application for a site plan amendment to add 24 residential units and make revisions to parking at 67 Elm Street, including removal of the underground parking garage was continued. It then went before the Historic District, 6/28/2023, for application for amendment to a Certificate of Appropriateness to add residential units, remove underground parking and alter exterior building materials was denied for the following reasons. The change in the proposed material resulting in the absence of brick as previously approved and the removal of the brick would not fit into the character of the area. It went to the planning board, July 19th, 2023, for a site plan amendment and applicant withdrew the amendment at that time to add additional units. So it's before us with RSA 67717, appeal when zoning ordinances exist.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Mears.
I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. So I basically want to ask, okay, so like, I want to put it right out there and sort of speak, what's the ground rules on this? Are we allowed to pass and cut up things? Like, say we like...say they can't afford the brick, right? But we decide that we like the underground parking. Are we allowed to chop that up in any way? If I can, Ms. Mears, if she can answer.
So this would have to go back to the planning board for the additional units and the amendment to the site plan? So that is under the planning board's purview?
Okay, so that's under the planning board's ruling. So we're just here to judge on if it's going to pass and we see something different than HDC, is correct?
Right, so we're acting as an HDC. So if we felt that the brick was not in accordance to HDC regulations or removing the parking garage and putting it in the apartments was not within the HDC guidelines or covering up the opening that the garage lead is not within the guidelines of the HDC, then that will be what we have tonight. That's what is on the page tonight.
That's correct. And I just want to make sure that the people in the audience, the people at home understood that. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
I just have a quick clarifying question regarding the parking. The elimination of the parking doesn't leave the required parking on the site deficient, does it?
So that would be something that the planning board is going to have to look at. That's going to have to go back to the planning board for approval, for the additional units.
Right, so the approval of the plan...of the units is actually a planning...that's within the planning board. So Historic District looks at not necessarily the adding of the new units, but the look of adding the new units. The physical...how the building will look with the garage gone and the new units there. But actually whether they can add the additional units, that's the planning board. And whether the parking is sufficient or they have to take other actions for parking, again, that's the planning board.
So that's why, I don't mean to be redundant, but we're here only to decide on if we approve the HDC's recommendations or we don't.
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fredette.
It's my understanding that not only we hear on that, but it looks like fundamentally we're being asked to judge on the siding materials, correct? As that's what was turned down.
Correct, that is the primary justification.
Justification. And if we choose to rule on...however we choose to rule, my understanding from past experience is we are allowed to put conditions on our decision being if we want...I don't know. I'm just pulling...I remember another case where we had the guy add shutters on Winter Street. But we are allowed conditions, if I understand correctly, or not.
I would say that's planning board's purview.
So if it's on the physical appearance of the building, we would be able...we would be allowed to add conditions, just like the HDC would add conditions.
Thank you.
On the color of the brick or the color of the siding or whatever, yes, we could add those stipulations, just like the HDC could. Because we're essentially acting as the HDC.
Correct, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Mears or clarifications? Okay, will the applicant please come forward? State your name.
Rob Prebody for the applicant.
Ben Stevens.
We just have a short slideshow...well, it's not a short, but a slideshow to put up on the screen. So if you give me one second to get set up.
Technical experts coming in in case you need anything.
I think you trained him well.
Not me.
Thanks very much for hearing our appeal tonight. Hopefully, hopefully it will come out favorably for us. But I appreciate your time one way or the other. Thank you. So as was previously mentioned, our approval or approved design from the HDC is what you're seeing right here, was approved on the 22nd of November, 2022. As you can see, there's...this is from Elm Street, which is kind of the primary area that's going to be impacted, although all the siding would change. This design was approved with underground parking, which you can see along Elm Street, and 128 units. Parking was going to be kind of excavated. If you're familiar with this area at all, it's sloping downwards. So we'd actually have to dig into the hill to kind of excavate, which was going to be a process. So we received HDC approval on this design after several meetings and a site walk, as you heard the site history for. Subsequently, after we received site plan approval and the HDC approval, we kind of got into the feasibility of the project and started getting construction bids and things like that. And, you know, realized it was just going to be, you know, a better project, more feasible to build if we added more units and took out the underground parking, removed the brick. So we...obviously, that requires an HDC approval because we're changing the exterior of the building. Some of the kind of design elements around the windows and obviously the underground parking, to the extent it was going to be affected, we were going to put units kind of on that first floor where the parking is in this design. So we subsequently submitted a series of different color options, but that basically, you know, remove the brick, you know, along Elm Street where the parking was, put units there and also reduce some of the other brick and replace it with clapboard, which we feel is very consistent with the siding materials used in the neighborhood. Personally aesthetically, I think this also is a kind of lighter design that's less...that kind of is less in your face about the kind of the scale of the building. So, you know, all tastes is different. But mine personally, I think this is a more sensitive to the design, to the existing built environment. We brought this design to the HDC because of the material changes and the changes in the streetscape along Elm Street where the parking used to be. And as was previously mentioned, it was denied. The design changes denied specifically, and this is what's written in the decision, not because of the parking, but specifically because of the brick, the lack of brick on the building, which, in the HDC's opinion, was not consistent with the existing neighborhood. To us, that didn't really sit right just because, you know, when you say it out loud, that you can't build a big building without having brick on it in the Historic District, it just doesn't sound like...it just doesn't sound right based on what's in the neighborhood. So we appealed the decision based on that. And I think we have plenty of examples to show that, you know, this design is consistent and clapboard is a consistent material with the existing neighborhood. So we'll get into that in a second. But I did want to talk a little bit about just kind of like the legal framework for this appeal. Kind of gets to some of the questions that were being asked prior to our presentation beginning. So this board basically has de novo review, which means that you kind of review all factual findings from the get-go. You can choose to accept the HDC's opinion as you want or your findings as you want. You don't have to. It's your prerogative. You can make new findings affect if you'd like. Generally, just like every other kind of zoning restriction, which you guys are probably very familiar with, restrictions like this, like what the HDC's restrictions are judged by reasonableness and the illegality, but that's not really, you know, applicable here, but reasonableness, which is, you know, the restriction and the burden that it places on the property owner. So the public purpose that's carried out by the restriction and, you know, what that's going to place on...how that's going to restrict the property owner's property rights, which are constitutionally guaranteed. So just as we're going through some of these examples and some of the presentation, I'd like you to just keep that in mind, like, just think about, you know, how the public purpose is served versus kind of the restrictions, the added costs, those kinds of things that are a result of the requirement that there be brick, for example, on this building. And here, just to...I don't know if I can blow it up, but these are the public purposes that are mentioned in the zoning ordinance for the Historic District. I think they're...again, I'd ask you to keep these in mind because they're not just, you know, kind of historic preservation. In particular, in this area where the, you know, there's a fair amount of blight, some of these other purposes that are mentioned are very applicable, you know, at a point specifically, strengthening the economy of the city, stabilizing and improving property values, promoting private and public use of structures and areas within the Historic District. I think all, you know, all those purposes need to be considered. In addition to that, I would also just mention that, you know, this is a housing project. There's a huge housing shortage in the area. This is a quick way to generate a lot more housing in Somersworth and in the Seacoast generally. And I think it's, you know, that purpose while not expressly listed in the ordinance is certainly implied by some of these economic concerns in the later part of the purposes section. And then also just one other overlay that has to do with the zoning. This particular area has the zoning, you know, is in the Historic District, but it's also got form-based zoning on top of it. So the, you know, planning board has additional kind of ways to, you know, consider consistency with the neighborhood beyond just the Historic District regulations. So there, you know, there are other ways to kind of achieve the public purposes than just through kind of like, you know, the Historic District regulations. So, you know, as...before I get to kind of the legal analysis, I just wanted to kind of take you through the Historic District a little bit just because I find it to be interesting. And I, you know, I ask you to think about whether, you know, as you walk through these pictures, whether you recognize this as a Historic District or not. I mean, you know, it is a name, but it certainly could use more improvement and development. And, you know, to some degree, these designations were made in 1982, 40 years ago. I don't know how relevant they are now or how well-served the city really is by maintaining them, frankly. You can see the entire Historic District on this map. Our property is kind of in that yellow highlighted area, kind of off to the side. It almost looks a jury-mandared, you'll notice if you zoom in. You know, several, you know, parcels are just kind of carved out, including, you know, the other main, very large building in the area, which is the DeClara plant. So, and also some other kind of like brick buildings that are along Main Street that are, you know, for whatever reason, weren't included as contributing in the Historic District. So what we're left with in this neighborhood is a very compact area that's got, you know, kind of a, you know, not, in my opinion, not a lot of kind of historic character. A lot of these buildings are rundown or have been replaced with, you know, the material...the building materials have been replaced with modern materials. They're not really contributing anymore the way they might have been when the first designation was made. And just to put some pictures on it, in case you haven't walked around down there lately, this is the view from Elm Street, just walking down. You can see kind of like the duplexes on one side and the kind of abandoned hotel on the other. This is as you walk down, these are all from May 2023. So, you know, I just wanted to kind of give you context for the built environment that you're looking in. This is along Elm Street continuing. There's kind of parking lots, street parking and some brush, things like that. Coming up, Green Street, this is 10 Green Street on your left. And this is kind of the border of the Historic District. As you get to the old courthouse, I just want to note that's a brick building. It's not in the Historic District. Again, you know, not really relevant to the Historic District analysis. Just running down Green Street some more, you can kind of see mattresses on the street, things like that. This is along Elm Street and Main Street, vacant lots. And then just to give you some kind of...is in the package, but I'll just reiterate, you know, you'll see building materials here that aren't wood, that aren't brick. It's a lot of aluminum, asbestos, asbestos clapboard, vinyl, more asbestos. I think you get stucco, you get the point. I note here that, you know, we have...the church at 10 Green Street is brick. But I think it's a good example of what, you know, kind of the downsides of Historic Districts. You've got an old church, which, you know, I don't disagree, it's a pretty building. It ceased being a church a long time ago, it was retrofitted for apartments. You know, there have been several building co-violations at that building just for lack of repairs. And, you know, I understand there's some concerns about the quality of the steeple. I think owners don't want to maintain steeples like that because they have to come before the hotel, the Historic District for approvals to do it. I just, you know, wonder whether it would be better if, you know, if you had the ability, without having to go get a demolition permit or something like that, to replace a church that's no longer a church with a purpose-built apartment building or a commercial building or something like that. So just something to keep in mind. This is the profile of the garage, it's clapboard as well. That's coming down as part of our existing approval. And then just more on Hyatt Street, more vinyl and aluminum clapboard. And then this along 93 Main, there's a brick building, although it does appear that some of the brick has been replaced with some sort of stone facade at some point probably recently. Then walking down Main Street here, these buildings are also almost all clapboard, different building materials, a lot of them modern, you know, vinyl clapboard again. Lots of these, I mean, just looking at them, I don't know if you consider them worthy of historic preservation. I think if somebody wanted to take them down, you know, it'd probably be a benefit, you know, overall to the city. So I just bring this up just to point out that within this Historic District, you know, the clapboard siding predominates. And additionally, lots of building materials that aren't kind of wood and brick or stone are used now. It's relevant in particular because, you know, kind of the benchmark for historic preservation is the U.S. Department of Interior Historic Preservation Standards. And one of the points that they make is that, you know, Historic Districts kind of lose their character when non-contributing...when modern materials are put on old buildings, right? So they kind of become contributing buildings or buildings that were once contributing have become non-contributing over time. So in this case, I think a lot of the kind of integrity of the Historic Districts have been lost to modernity, frankly. But just again, reiterating that clapboard's extremely prevalent in the Historic District and it's, you know, putting on the side of our buildings certainly seems to be consistent with existing built conditions. So again, just, you know, what was approved here. And then these are just some of the color options that we had brought forth to the HDC for consideration, just to give an idea of what the building could look like. The gray on gray is personally my favorite, that's why I was using it. But so that's really just kind of what we're dealing with. Overall, I just wanted to again reiterate that, you know, the reasonableness based on what the existing conditions in the Historic Districts are like, you know, what kind of weight you want to attach to the importance of, you know, brick versus clapboard has to be weighed by the restriction, you know, that's placing on our property, which is ultimately a feasibility issue. And to me, just the idea that we can't use a building style that's well-represented within the Historic District under any circumstances, if the building's a certain size, doesn't seem to be a reasonable restriction on our property. So thank you, I appreciate you hearing our appeal. And I'm happy, obviously, to answer any questions you have.
So the way we usually run the meeting is, once you finish your presentation, we'll have...open up the floor to other individuals to speak. And then we'll ask you back up to ask you questions.
Thank you very much.
And you can clarify whatever. Anyone that would like to speak on the matter? Sir? Please state your name.
I have a handout, may I distribute that?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Witham, I live at 10 Rulo Drive here in Somersworth. I would suggest most of you recognize me as a city councilor here in town. And just outwardly and to be transparent, I have been in support of this project. I serve as the city council rep on the planning board, which did approve this project in its initial conception. And it's my understanding, as was articulated by Director Mears, that if this were to move forward with the underground units and the change in parking, that that would come back before the planning board. And I think that's an important element to keep in mind here. I think the job of the Historic District, as you all flushed out before we really got started here this evening, is to weigh in on whether or not the HDC's denial of the Certificate of Appropriateness for this project is in order or not. As the applicant described, the essence of the debate, if you will, is whether or not the brick facade, which the HDC originally approved, is like the only thing that can happen and not allow the siding option, which the developer showed you here tonight. If you watch the meeting where that decision was made, where the HDC did not grant the Certificate of Appropriateness for the siding option, there was significant conversation, discussion, I'll use the word debate, around the element of cost. Because the applicant brought forward at that meeting the fact that the brick facade is just a much more costly option than the siding option. And I think that would make sense to most people. I'm not a mason, but I'm guessing that it's more expensive to do that, for sure, both product and labor. There was also some discussion around the cost element because as the applicant describes, adding the units on the ground floor instead of the parking allows for more rental income, right? So there's a price point to these projects. I've never built a building like this, never will, but I can appreciate that the more units that you have to rent, the more money you're going to raise to pay for a project. And this is a multimillion-dollar project, a difficult project in a difficult area. I would contend that the HDC's point that they are not to consider the cost of a project is inaccurate. If you look at what I've provided you for a handout, I've just provided you with a segment from Chapter 19 of the Somersworth zoning ordinance, very similar to what the applicant displayed. I can promise you, we did not talk. Fascinating how the stars align here, though. And I've highlighted several areas here which talk about economic prosperity, strengthen the economy, stabilize and improve property values within the city. All of that speaks to a cost element, in my view. So although not directly called out the cost of the building, the idea that we need to sort of massage cost because there's a benefit to the city ultimately is something that should be considered as part of the project. The other thing I would draw your attention to in the purpose statement, and I've highlighted and read here, is that a great deal of the ordinance speaks to structures that are greater than 50 years old. And if you dig into the ordinance, there's very little about new construction. If you go to the standards of review that are developed by the Historic District Commission, they do speak about new construction. And I'll read for you here. It says, "New construction should reflect the theme of nearby existing buildings." I think that's what the applicant tried to display with some of the imagery that they presented to you here. I watch all of the HDC meetings. I've been open about my struggles with the HDC. I try to embrace it and at times I do, but at times, I'll just be frank, I struggle with it because of the difficulty of property owners to do things in a historically accurate way. My poster child example of this, which is perhaps a bit off-point, but I think is important, was a project on Grove Street a number of years ago. There was a failing retaining wall that the city actually flagged the property owner on. I believe there was a citation because the retaining wall was failing. The retaining wall was concrete blocks stacked one on top of the other, typical mortar joint, a very modern building product, and it was painted. Well, it wasn't done correctly and it was falling over, right? It was an ISO or the paint was peeling. It wasn't a historic product at all. And the applicant came forward and wanted to replace that failing concrete block wall with an interlocking block system that we actually have on High Street now as part of our downtown improvement project. Gray in color, sort of looks like granite, it's not, it's a man-made product, would certainly look better than the concrete block wall that was falling over and was in disrepair. The HDC ruled that that new block was not appropriate for the Historic District and asked the applicant to come back and discuss options such as a stone wall or stacked granite wall and those sorts of things, which the applicant did and came back and talked about the price point of that more historically accurate wall. And quite frankly, said he couldn't do it. So low and behold, what happened? Nothing. The failing wall continued to fail. I think now it's just a tapered lawn, there is no wall ultimately. But it goes to the point that there's a cost element that either developers or homeowners, property owners, need to weigh as they try to deal with the historical appropriateness of... of properties. In this particular case, though, it's a new property. It's not more than 50 years old, it's new. We're trying to blend it in. I'll draw your attention to a couple of examples on the hill and ask you how well we did. There was a house fire on Emery Street a number of years ago. The home was damaged so bad that it had to get rebuilt. I believe a modular home was brought in and put in that place. In my eyes, it doesn't look historic. It looks like any other house in the city. It looks very nice, the property is well-maintained, but it's not historic. And then more recently, a Cape House built on Winter Street that had quite a bit of wrangling done with the historic district. It looks like a cape in my neighborhood. It doesn't look any different, right? So I think the struggle with our zoning ordinance section pertaining to the historic district is that it perhaps does okay, although I do think it struggles on occasion with existing historic homes greater than 50 years old. But it doesn't do well with new construction because it's not particularly called out in either the HDC regulations much, or in the actual zoning ordinance with regard to the HDC. At issue here is, is clapboard okay versus brick? It's a subjective conversation. It's in the eyes of the beholder. I think there are a number of examples, as were pointed out, where clapboards are all around the historic district. Perhaps a building that's multi-story, that serves as apartments, that's all clapboard, is the Queensberry Mill, just as you come across the bridge, kind of akin to this, in my opinion. So I appreciate the work of the historic district. Again, I struggle with how they have to massage and deal with things, but in this case, I do believe they erred in not granting the certificate of appropriateness. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Hold on a sec, sir. Come here, you go ahead. Go ahead. I'll rush it once.
Hi, my name is Matt Tenola. I'm a direct abutter on this project. And I just want to thank the zoning board for hearing me out on this. I'm abutted directly on two sides, but basically, the impact to my property is going to be 100%. Streetscape, Church Court, and then direct abutting on my southern and easterly sides of my house. Also during that time, when they start building, I'm going to be directly impacted to a great degree by any construction. So this is one of my, one of the concerns I have. And I'm not here to second guess the HDC's decision, nor am I here to vet the new proposal. I think that's your job. And we put our faith in your ability to do that job. So what I would like to see ultimately, is I'd like to see the project happen in a most aesthetically pleasing way that does not impinge on my business or my ability to run it during or after the implementation. Concerns to my business is, am I even going to be able to access my backyard? Are all the parking spots from on the street going to be taken up during the construction process by construction workers? Am I going to have to come up with, is Church Court going to be shut down while they do the work on it? These are direct concerns that I have because it's going to directly impact my ability to run my business. So basically, access to the backyard, access to the side from church, street, parking out front, dust, noise, all of that. It's all me. I know there's no recourse for me initially. So these are things I need to be concerned with moving forward. Also, the impact to my current landscaping, shade trees, a lot of that's going to go away, or it's going to have to go away. So that begs the question, what is going to be there to replace it? How is it going to be decided upon? I've seen some basic things about what the landscape is going to look like, but I'd like to see that fleshed out a little bit better, so that I just don't end up looking at a monolith with nothing to. Because literally, right now, I can look out my back window, I can see Berwick. That's not going to happen after this, so. I think the overall benefit, when they're talking about a cost-benefit analysis, yeah, it's going to cost, it's going to cost me, from the things that I just described, but I also think that there's going to be a huge economic benefit and aesthetic improvements to Elm Street and Church Court and Langley Way and Green Street. So I think overall, it could be a positive, but it's all going to depend on the city following through and the developer following through, and making sure that these things happen and it doesn't end up one-sided. So other than that, I just want to make sure that we keep our lines of communication open throughout the whole project between the city and myself, who is greatly impacted, and the developer. That's just open lines. If you're going to come in and start blasting rock, it would be nice for me to know ahead of time, things like that. If you're bringing in large pieces of equipment, I would like to know. Not that I'm like, going to approve or disapprove, but let's just all try to work together here. And then finally, you know, I know they have a long way to go. I don't want to stand in the way one way or another. I think I will benefit ultimately. I think the whole town will benefit ultimately. But I also want to make sure that, you know, we end up with a product that we can be proud of. So that's what I've had to say. I'm trying to stay neutral.
Thank you. Ms. Mears?
Ms.
Logistics during construction, is that your office or is that the planning board?
That's our office.
Okay, so he should contact your office for any concerns and coordinate it with you guys.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
If I may comment, yeah, I was going to say that the abutter should definitely make the planning board meeting and make your concerns aware. Am I correct, Ms. Mears?
Yep, you will be notified as well.
Any design concerns with the planning board?
Yeah.
Logistics during construction would be her.
We're here to listen to you, but I think the planning board probably has more, and Ms. Mears, as the planner, has more authority. It's okay. Thank you.
Hold on, sir.
Thank you, Chris Wharton, 15 Frankor Drive, as well. Also a member of the planning board, Stratford Regional Planning Commission. So I think it's probably important just to stay on topic and, you know, focus on brick versus the clapboard, as has been proposed. I just want to speak in favor of the revision. I think, you know, it's been well described as being consistent with already established structures in the area. Can't speak enough about the public benefit, the housing benefit. Also, the amount of off-site improvements that the applicant is making and has really stepped up to include rebuilding of Church Court, off-site lighting, and additional parking to make sure that we have at least 1.3 parking spots per unit there as well. So a lot of the other comments that were made will be certainly addressed in the planning board's purview and revision. So I hope you guys choose in favor of allowing the applicant to move forward. Thanks.
Good evening. Laura Berry, Chair of the Historic District Commission. I want to confirm that all of you received my write-up around this appeal, so then I will not go into too much detail around what you have, but I do want to touch on a few points around this project.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's not your face.
No worries. So I want to make sure that you all are aware, a couple of things have come up. Why we don't look at cost. It is not within our purview to do so. I understand that does come up, but if you go to look at any historic district, we are supposed to do what's right and what fits into our community, not what costs less. So if we're going to start looking at cost, we need to look at our regulations. This is not happening with that change, so we should not be using that as an excuse. My other thing is, if we are going to be looking at cost, when this project first came before us, it was economical, they could do it, it was there. I do know that the other properties were bought, and that also has made a financial impact on this project. So I also put forward to the applicant that they should have the reason why the cost plan changed, not just for the facade of the building. I also provided a couple of things to you, that yes, clapboard is in the neighborhood, brick is also eminent in the neighborhood. We don't just look at the exact historic things right next to the building. We look at everything that is next to that building. We look at the district, what overall is in the district. Some of the other locations that were mentioned is the Queensberry Mill. That has brick on it, very first floor. One of the very first things that the HDC did with this application, and I was actually very happy that they worked with us, we said, "What do you want to be at the end of this project? Are you a mill? Are you a two-story resident?" That's an apartment building. They chose to go the mill route. That is how we looked at this project. Every mill is not all clapboard that we have to pull from. GE, Queensberry Mill, and multiple other facilities around the area. Sorry. Getting a little nervous up here. I mean, it's to be on the outside now. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware of that. If you do decide to allow this project, it would be going against what our regulations allow us to do. So I want to make sure that is very clear, that we did everything within our guidelines. I just also wanted to point out that I hope you take those into consideration, because if you're looking at a large-scale building and you want it to fit in with other large-scale buildings, they are not all clapboard. And this would stick out around those. Thank you.
My name's Daniella Marrow. I live at 279 Main Street, so about a half a mile up from this project. Back in the day, I was on the Main Street Committee when we were a Main Street community. I don't know if any of you remember that, but I've been there for almost 30 years on Main Street. I walk through this neighborhood, Elm Street, this area, with my dog pretty much every day, Little Black Pity. Everybody seems to know everybody with our dogs around our neighborhood. I know that, I can respect that there is brick on the buildings, but anything would look better than what that area looks like right now. And I lived there so long. And part of the Main Street Committee, we desperately tried to get people into our downtown because that was the vital piece. This would bring people into our downtown. So I respect that we don't want something ugly in our downtown. We have that already, but the building I'm seeing isn't ugly. And I'm okay with the clapboard. As a resident that lives in the immediate area, living in a clapboard house, not a mill, but I just wanted to come tonight and just give a resident's perspective of someone who walks that area literally every day. Thank you.
My name's Richard Brooks. I live at 18 Linden Street here in Somersworth. I am on the HDC as well, and obviously ZBA, but standing up here just as a citizen tonight, and actually very welcome to not have to be unbiased in this. I'm going to have kind of an attitude here. I think that we've got several situations that have created a bigger problem here. Speaking as a resident only for this, but I'm intimately familiar with both the HDC and the ZBA, obviously. And I'm going to be very blunt and hope that everyone understands that I'm going to say, I might even lose some favorable opinions from some of my colleagues over this. But I don't believe that any outcome tonight will be a very good scenario. It's a win in the long term, due to several failures of various groups involved with this entire project. This started out with a conceptual review, that's something new that the HDC tried to bring up, so that on especially larger projects, we can discuss what is anticipated rather than having a plan put before us first. This came with a plan through the conceptual project and went through two or three meetings as a conceptual review. Should have been as a formal plan at that point. Then when it did come before us, we very discussed this, and I think the HDC failed to limit the size of this building. If you look at the first regulations in our ordinance, it looks to the size and scale of the building, just like form-based codes did. We just failed to do that. I'm not blaming anyone, it was a board decision. Our form-based codes played a part in that by encouraging development inconsistent with HDC regulations. Exactly what I think the previous councillor presented those originally intended. And it's put chaos into our historic district, because all of the form-based codes are now within our historic district, making two levels of visual appearance regulations. It's overcomplicated it. The planning board and city council then allowed 1.3 parking spaces per unit. That will overwhelm the parking along there. Many people came and discussed this at our meetings. I know that they supplied parking down on Main Street, but we know people are not going to walk up a block uphill and then up flights of stairs to their apartments at the end of a long day. That's just not human nature. And both the planning board and city council, I think, are failing to, you know, I've heard comments, I'd welcome a parking problem, but parking problems are a lot easier to avoid than they are to fix. So I think that's another failure. Then 67 Elm Street enters the mix, asking to tear down the old Somersworth Hotel for safety reasons and to eliminate the blight. No mention that it would be sold to 85 Elm Street. The HDC normally wants a reuse plan before any demo. We didn't get that because the safety seemed to be a more concerning aspect. I don't know if there was perfectly time planning on that purchase, but here we go. 85 Elm Street then purchases 67 Elm Street, simply for more parking. They could have supplied the ratio closer to the two spaces per unit at this point, but they already have the 1.3, so why change it? That was already approved. And we put more units in, and that alteration is what ended up before the HDC. And the appearance of the building was drastically changed. The HDD's then denied that amendment, and I believe those conditions were poorly described. Another failure from another group along the way here. Knowing the ZBA's members sitting here tonight, and I'm not sure I would disagree, that maybe this appeal should be granted. But I'm sure it will be. I've seen even this board grant applications based on their own opinion rather than the five criteria that we normally have to do. So again, just as the HDC, everybody makes mistakes. This building is going to be an overwhelming size compared to everything around it. But congratulations, everybody approves stuff because we need housing. Well, we're going to get housing. And of course, market rate housing for one and two bedrooms are around $1,800 a month. This is only $263,600 a month they'll be bringing in, a mere $3,283,200 a year. So I understand why you can't afford brick. If we had developers that cared about Somersworth as well, not just the dollars, I would challenge them to alter this plan and provide a facade that is flat and mimics a mill building. And we have, in your packets tonight, I believe you'll see several mill buildings. You'll notice they always have repeating windows that are all uniform, a flat facade, not the bump-in bumps-outs, trim around the windows. Things I'd love to see them embrace and try to bring to the table. I feel this is going to be like the big building on Central Ave that we have in Dover, and I don't think a lot of people really appeal to the look of that. Yet, if you go right across the bridge here, look at the developers that actually care about the character of the surrounding area in Berwick. Those buildings, if we could get it, half is done, half as well-done as those, we would have a huge improvement here in Somersworth. So, you know, I understand you guys have to look at the fact of why it was denied, and unfortunately, that was poorly written. You know, I think we've got so many things that play into the oversight, whether it be zoning, historic district, form-based codes, planning, that we haven't been on the same page. page. And this is not a well-done project as a result of that. You know, they've mentioned a lot of the houses in the area being redone, having asbestos or other modern materials. A lot of that was done prior to the historic district. If somebody resides them, that's our opportunity to restore a building back to it. A lot of them have the same physical structure to the building and could be restored easily at minimal cost when they finally get to the point of doing that. And bringing up old cases of retaining walls that we've hopefully adjusted our ordinances to address since then, I don't think is fair towards the HDC either. And, you know, nothing's perfect. There's always gonna be mistakes along the way, but we strive to do better. And I think this whole project could've been done better, A to Z. I'm certainly not against development. We need development. We just need it to be done in a fitting fashion that's not overwhelmingly huge, out-of-character for the area that it's gonna be in. And that's ultimately what the HDC is striving for, but again, I'm not naming names or picking on individuals. I think many groups and boards, committees, whatever, failed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other people like to speak?
Good evening. I know some of you. I'm Kimberly Showne. I'm an attorney in Somersworth. I'm on High Street. I own a Victorian with a slate roof that has been before the Historic District Committee a lot. In fact, two years ago, I had to put a snow fence on my roof at an extra cost of $2,500 rather than just re-roofing it. I did it. I think it's important that we look at that. I'm not just a homeowner here, I've actually had to deal with the Historic District Committee, and I joined it because I think it's important to preserve the history that we have in Somersworth. What's interesting to me, when I looked at this project and the videos these guys showed, the little slideshow, is that they forgot to show you the main reason that the Historic District Committee is concerned about this property. Conveniently, they left out the agent's house. I'm hoping, before you vote, or before you at least think about it, that you look and think about what the agent's house is. It's a giant greenhouse that sits on the top of that hill, kind of like overlooking the properties of the agent that he was observing and working through, and it's magnificent. It is one of the best properties in our city. The reason that we are concerned as the Historic District about this project was because it's literally gonna look like Paul Revere's house in Boston when you're done. Has anybody seen that? It's the little house and everything is all around it as little skyscrapers, and that's what they're doing. If you look at their site plan, it is 30 feet from the door of the agent's house. Literally, the little sidewalk retaining wall, the edge of that is gonna be three stories, four stories of a building, straight up, flat. That's why we're concerned. This is not random about, "We don't want development." My God, I love housing, are you kidding? As a defense attorney and a divorce attorney, I got clients living in the streets. This is not the housing they need, by the way, at $1,800 to $2,500 a unit. If anyone went to the housing workshop, which I did because I'm concerned, the average affordability for people in our community per unit is $1,400. You know what that means? None of the people who are working at Walmart, who are working at Home Depot, who are working at the DQ, which by the way, can't find workers, are gonna live in these places. You know what they say, what they're looking for? They're trying to recruit the shipyard workers. I understand shipyard workers need housing, but don't kid yourself to think that this is housing that is gonna somehow save the community that we have, the homeless people that we have who need housing, 'cause it is not affordable, which is one of the issues that I do have with our community. We're not forcing these guys to do affordable housing. So when you look at this project, oh my gosh, it's all about brick. What's the tax break we gave them? Did we give them seven years? Seven years at the current tax rate? I don't know what that is or what the savings is, but my calculation is that's the million they're gonna save on the brick. So ask yourself as well, think about this. This is a million-dollar company, this is a million-dollar project. Do you really believe that they went into this without a feasibility study? Are you kidding me? What I look at is all the disingenuous actions that occurred, and there are a lot of them that you're not familiar with, starting with the purchase of the property owned by Michael and Michael Companies, who by the way, I helped buy that property with them. I'm the one who set out the parking and helped deal all of that. They were approached with a sham corporation, had no idea that these guys were buying it, found out after the fact, and by the way, are quite upset that the agent's house is being torn down, the little house. Both of those guys in the construction industry, Michael Turgeon, Michael Agitton, are adamant that that house could be moved. We unfortunately gave them permission to tear it down, which is a great regret. I did not agree with that. I also, and I know you've probably watched the footage, I've been very vocal about my objection to this project. I think it's great on 108. I think it's great on Main Street. I think it's great shipped outside of town. Hilltop Sables is possibly for sale. Stick it out there. Perfect plan. You can have your clapboard siding, you can have your cheap parking, you can have your Walmart, 'cause to me, that's what this is. This is a Walmart. And they wanna stick it in our community and go, "Hey, you know what? Somersworth doesn't deserve better." And I, as a landowner, think we deserve better. We deserve a project that fits in. If you look all the way around this project, there is brick. There's a brick church. And what do they say? "Oh, well, it's decaying, and the steeple, and all these projects should just be torn down." Did you listen to what he said? A lot of these things should just be torn down and have purposeful buildings in their place. Hear that. These are not developers who give a crap about what they put here. This is all about money. And if you're gonna say it's about money, then look at the money that they're getting from the tax break, and you, I think, have the ability to say, "You know what? Sure, you're not gonna get the tax break. You wanna build the cheaper building? Don't give them the tax break. Don't give them the opportunity." By the way, they came back before us and said, "We wanna add more units," because under the guise, they bought the Somersworth Hotel. Again, I think that that was disingenuous and not appropriate, and the way that they went about it and the way they've gone about a lot of this is inappropriate. They buy that building, then they come back and immediately say, "Hey, we want more units." And by the way, we want cheaper siding, and it's not just cheaper siding. We want cheaper windows. We want, we don't wanna do any painted brick. We don't wanna do any stonework. We just wanna be bottom-end in this project, but charge the highest rents we can. And so I understand that you guys all want these 128 or 148 or 156 units, but please look at the fact that if you choose this, you're sending a message not just to our community, but to other developers, that Somersworth is just a dumping ground. Build the cheapest stuff you can, put it wherever, we're not gonna stand in your way 'cause we desperately want housing. Think about that. If you say to them, "Hey, you gotta do the brick, there's a couple of choices here," they are not gonna abandon this project. They have too much money into it to walk away. They've purchased too many other properties to walk away. They're gonna build something, or maybe they'll sell it to Chinburg, or Great Falls, who is doing the stuff in Berwick, which is fantastic. Has anybody looked at that? It fits in with the community? It's beautiful. Look at what Great Falls has done. They read it at our school. It's beautiful. Sorry, Chinburg, why not have a developer that actually cares about what's happening in our community? So, I have concerns about all of that. Let's replace, what their own quote is, quote, "Let's replace our old churches and other buildings that are not serving us with, quote, 'purposeful-built apartment buildings.'" Spoken like a true developer, we don't really care about the historic community, we're just gonna flat-line it. That's why we have the Historic District. I'm assuming some of you know that the reason we created a Historic District is so that we stopped the urban renewal in the 1960s and 1970s where we just demolished everything? We demolished our opera houses, we demolished our movie theaters, we just demolished them and put buildings in their place. The Historic District was created to stop that. So your vote today says a lot of different things. It says, "Hey, we don't care, Somersworth is willing to be the bottom of the barrel by developers. Hey, we don't care about our major historic buildings, we're happy to have an apartment building that looks like crap just stuck there, right in the front yard." And it also says something to landlords like me, 'cause quite honestly, I still have a slate roof, a mansard slate roof. I can't repair it, I'm struggling to find someone, so guess what? I'm coming before you, because if money doesn't matter, then I should be able to just shingle that sucker tomorrow. So be advised, and everyone is gonna get the same message. Well, the message you send here is not just, "Hey, we're gonna do the apartment building." It is, "Hey, corporations win, little guys don't." Or, "Hey, by the way, Somersworth doesn't really care about Historic District, so everybody just run to the ZBA, 'cause the Historic District Commission has no teeth." It's more than just this project, and you have to think about that as you're doing this. You also have to think about the agent's house. If you can actually put commissions on it, then maybe what you should say is, "Hey, gang, you gotta give the agent's house 100-foot buffer, not 30 feet, and have this four-story apartment building in the front yard." If you walk around as well, everything downtown has brick. Everything. Anything over two stories has brick. Take a walk and look. All of our downtown is brick. All of our churches are brick. And a lot of the buildings around this, anything over two stories, are brick. So, you guys are getting to decide, but the message you send, you need to recognize, is more than just this project.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice, anyone else? Okay, will the applicant please come forward?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have some correspondence from...
Wait one.
This is from David Baker of Sometown LLC, 85 Elm. "The purpose of this memo is to communicate my full support for the development of the 85 Elm Street project in the downtown Somersworth. In my opinion, this is a transformational project that will provide a multitude of benefits to the community. As many of you know, I have completed numerous projects in Somersworth as I recognize the full potential of the city that many at the time could not envision at the time. Now we have a project that will help to move the city a long way towards realization of this vision, and it is critical that this is allowed to move forward. This will provide a tremendous boon to downtown businesses, significantly enhance the tax revenue base, and will truly invigorate activity downtown. Think about it, this project will bring at a minimum 125 individuals, likely much more, into the downtown corridor, providing a massive stimulus to positive social, business, and community activity. I further believe this project will act as a magnet, attracting other similar projects and encourage other millennials to the region who are priced out of Portsmouth and Dover, who will seek to be part of the rebirth of our downtown corridor. This project is so exciting to me, and I remain most hopeful that those who remain skeptical or to seek hold the project to a standard that would make it financially unfeasible will see the big picture, how positive this project will be for the city and make it one of the most desired destinations for young professionals and new businesses. I would ask all involved to really work towards achieving this goal, as I do not believe we can afford the risk of not having this project move forward." And that's from David Baker.
David Baker. Do you have any others?
Laura Berry did submit one. Laura, do you wanna read your...
Well, I think we had, it's all in our package, right?
Yeah.
So it's fine, it's fine, we don't need to reread it.
All right, that's it. It's done.
I think we all can read. Last time I checked. All right. Will the applicant now come forward? All right, questions for the applicant. Christopher Det.
Would the applicant like to provide a rebuttal for any of the concerns brought forth by those members of the public that chose to speak this evening?
Kind of generally, without getting into the weeds, there were a lot of mischaracterizations about, you know, when we were buying property, I have no idea. Like, listening to it, it sounded like we were in some sort of conspiracy to... It was kind of strange credulity. It's not true, and I just wanna be on record saying that. Sorry, I'm just, you know, trying to be polite, but also, you know, kind of make sure you guys know, we weren't like conspiring with the prior owners of the hotel or anything like that. You know, it was frankly, we didn't wanna buy the property until we were looking around for areas to put parking after our planning board approval. Like, you know, we're currently leasing parking spots from the city. It's a good rate, but, you know, it's, you know, make economic sense to have additional onsite parking, so that's, that was the reason for that.
They're all planning board issues.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I just, you know, you can only be called a liar so many times before... So beyond that, you know, it's kind of, again, the neighborhood's a little bit in the eye of the beholder if you just let every single person have their opinion. But if you're going by something that's a standard, you're looking at the Historic District neighborhood, right? And in that neighborhood, clapboard prevails. And also note that, like, you know, the Eclair Building's a big building. I don't think you want us to like reproduce that with the style of siding it has, right? Just because something exists that way doesn't mean that every, every building has to be that way, I guess. And, you know, to the extent that more modern building materials exist for building foundations and things like that, we should use them. We shouldn't put stone everywhere, everywhere we have it. But in general, just in terms of aesthetics, I said this initially in my, in my first presentation, if you're worried about the agent's house, which we did provide pictures of, it is right next door, it is, our building is not much taller than it. And we frankly think that clapboard, because the agent's house is clapboard, is a much more sensitive building material than brick. Brick's a heavy material, it makes the building look more massive. Taking the, taking the clap, the brick off the building, actually, I think softens it and makes it more compatible with the existing building environment. So again, that's a, that's a matter of taste to some degree, but I do think there, there's a, you know, there's a point that it's not great to hang brick everywhere. You can't just be, as old mills had, brick on them. So beyond that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so, a little background about myself. I've lived here in this city my whole life, 59 years. I worked for the fire service here for several years, and I was, been involved with the city. So, I live here, this is my home. And I'm the guy who always seems to ask the questions that nobody wants to ans, to ask. But I'm that guy, 'cause I, 'cause I have to ask the question. And I might not believe your answer. If this gets denied tonight, are you gonna go back and put brick on it?
No.
No. You're gonna pull the plug on the project?
Yep. Well, no, we're probably gonna appeal it up to the housing...
I'm sorry.
We're gonna probably appeal it further.
You're gonna go further?
Yep, most likely. Because we really don't think that this is, that that decision, that, you know, brick, you know, only, only, only appropriate building material for buildings over two stories or whatever it is, whatever standard was trying to be announced by the HDC, is, is brick. Like, that just can't be the right answer for...
Right. And just for point of clarification, I do wanna say that that building that you're talking about, that's gonna be 30 feet away, I think Ms. Showne talked about, if you look at that building closely, it has clapboards on it. To the best of my recollection, they're rounded clapboards. They're not square clapboards, so they're rounded with a router.
It actually has vinyl on a fourth of it. It's vinyl sided.
But the other side is rounded clapboards. And what I mean by that, it's not a square-edged clapboard, just for what we're talking about historically, I'm pretty sure that they took a router on them, just like the house up on the hill on the corner of Noble Street, and up there is the same thing. I've done a lot of work on them. So it's just, this is just a point of clarification to keep everybody on the same, on this page. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Det.
Yeah, there's been some discussion, and I think I saw it in the notes, that the Queensberry Mill has come up quite a bit. I think that is a sided structure with a brick first story. It seems to be somewhat consistent in size and scale to what you're doing. Have you entertained modifying your original plan insofar as to have brick on the first story and then some sort of clapboard material to cover the rest?
If you look at the Queensberry Mill, it's just the very front area, and I think, and then it, it's, it's on a slant, so the brick goes way down. It's not truly the full first story is brick. The majority of it is clapboard. And then the very front of it is brick, and then the sides taper down. We, we looked at doing options like that, and it's just not feasible.
I guess there's some concern that I heard tonight, and I would ask you to parse out, there, there seems to be some concern about the financial cost of doing this, and I guess what in a way you're asking for by bringing up the financial piece is to bring it into the discussion. Could you parse out the financial piece a little bit more so that we have a better understanding?
So just, let me clarify something on, on the law. And I, I disagree with the HDC, some, some members of the HDC's position that the HDC is not allowed to consider economic feasibility. That's just, there, just as, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the evaluation has to be based on reasonableness, and the burden that the HDC's restrictions place on a property owner, that just inherently considers financial and economic burden. That's just, that's just, that's like the very nature of the, of the reasonableness evaluation. You have to consider that. I don't know if it's not, like, if the point is that it's not specifically stated in the guidelines, but, but as a matter of law, that's certainly the case.
Maybe I didn't phrase my question right. If you're saying that the financial piece needs to be considered, what is the financial piece other than, "Trust us, we can't afford it"?
Well, so, a couple of things happened. You know, to the extent that you're...
You know, to the extent that your, construction costs in general, since we started permitting this project over a year and a half ago, have...
People are quite...
Sorry.
That's right.
And also, as I'm sure you're aware, interest rates have went toppled, you know, the, the cost of money's gotten a lot more expensive. So just making projects work is just a lot tighter now than it was when we started permitting, partly, you know, just because of macroeconomic conditions. Specifically as to brick versus, brick siding versus clappard, I mean, it's doubled two and a half times.
It, it's about two and a half times to do brick than it is clapboard.
Is there truth to the statement that you've modified the windows and other factors as well to the exterior facade, or is this, is this truly simply all that you are changing is the clapboard?
So, so we changed the, so there were lentils above the windows, which were partly because of the brick. We took them off, and we took the brick off. I think we changed the window, which I understand is not in the HDC's purview, the color of it from black to white.
But that's not...
And, I mean, did we make any changes to the, yeah, so we, I mean, to the extent that the plans show something different, we're happy to kind of stick to the existing.
Thank you.
Mr. Vincent.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So I think Kimberly Shonan brought up some points about her figures, or the figures on what the apartments we're going to rent as in so-called income. Is there any merit to that? I mean, is, what are, what are your projections?
Just out of curiosity, where's this going? Because...
It's only going to a place where we're still trying to find, I'm still trying to find where they're coming up with, if, if the numbers that Kimberly gave, Ms. Shonan gave, for an example, are true, then I'm trying to find out a money basis, because we can't figure out here what a money basis is, except for what they say they can't afford. So if you just give me just a little bit of leniency, I won't go too further, Mr. Chairman, but maybe you can give me your side, because it's a defend, you're defending this, right? Am I right or wrong?
Absolutely.
If you could, I'm sorry, and...
Just trying to understand, make sure we're going.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if we could charge, you know, I, I think what was interesting about that conversation is affordability of housing. And also, you know, sure, could we put brick on and charge Boston prices? Yes, but will we have any tenants if we're charging Boston prices? It, it won't hap, we won't have any tenants up here. I mean, we can't charge $3,000 for a one bedroom.
So what's your targeted, targeted, do you have a targeted rent, what you're going to charge?
Right.
We're going to, we're going to charge what the market rent is, is, is...
If I may follow up, Mr. Chairman? So that's what just, that's what she just said, was the market rent. Is she right or is she wrong?
I would say the market rent for a one bedroom with all utilities included is about $1,650 to $1,700 a month.
Isn't that what she just said?
I think she said $1,800.
Okay, so you're probably not going to have any apartments there that are going to be $1,800?
If we have two bedrooms.
So what she said is pretty close. Thank you.
But, but one thing to factor in is, so her monthly projection, her yearly projection, I think what we're going at, doesn't include the cost to maintain the building. It, it doesn't...
I get that, sir. I do construction work. I've been doing maintenance for a long time. There's little maintenance in a brand-new building, however, there is maintenance that's due to destruction by a tenant. Thank you very much for answering my question.
Question for you. So the building is located in a, in, in the historic district. What, so under the new plan, what, what is in the building makes the characteristic of that building historic, or makes it fit into a historic district?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So you're in a, you're building a structure in a historic district, right? It is the historic district.
Right, but, but, right, so I guess one of the things that was, one of the things that's tough about this project within this historic district is that the, the existing buildings by a kind of definitional nature aren't very historic. They have modern materials incorporated, they haven't been taken care of. They're, you know, we're building on a, on a one and a half acre parking lot that was previously used for surplus parking from the Eclair Plant. Like, it's just an unusual, I think if you walk down that street, just like the average guy on the street, and, and ask whether they thought they were in a historic district, they would, they would guess no, right? Like, it's not, I'm not sure there's much, you know, a lot, I think a lot of people would look at it and welcome anything that, in fact, I think there were some comments on that side of it, welcome anything that, that is nice and, and, and well-built in the, in the neighborhood, in that particular location.
Right. So, I mean, this may be a little off-tack, but wouldn't you say that property is probably in a historic district because of the two existing, those two existing buildings on the property? The design of them, the charact, the look of, maybe not the material in them, but the design characteristic of them?
Certainly the agent's house, right? And, and from the, from the beginning, we, we never had a proposal where we were taking that down. It's a beautiful building, we, we want to keep it. So, and frankly, you know, we had, we had thought that that was going to be a, a benefit to the project, that, that, that building is going to be preserved. We never asked to demolish that. And we've really tried to be, even like, in the, in the design iterations, we actually kind of pushed back on the HDC to take brick off of that side of the building because it was so heavy relative to the, to the clappard siding there. So we're, we're trying to be more, I, I think frankly, getting back to kind of the, the reasons for the denial of the HDC decision, like, you know, if it's, if it's a big building, it's got to be brick. It's just not true when you look at the siding materials, when you look at the actual historic neighborhood that it's in, there's clappard. Clappard's like the, the building material, and we think that's very consistent.
Okay. Mr. Det.
Were you aware when you purchased the property that it was in the historic district?
No, we didn't even know that some, sorry, we weren't, we didn't even know that Somersworth...
I believe that if your realtor didn't inform you, you may be able to take legal action against your realtor, so I don't know on that one, but nonetheless...
So to that point, when we, we bought the building based on the, the agent's building, we didn't buy it with the redevelopment intentions. When we look, you know, because I think the form base zoning had just been recently adopted. So when we, when we bought it, it turned out we had this big empty parking lot, which actually is kind of a property tax burden on the, on the site, because we get assessed a lot more than, than you would for kind of, you know, if that, this land was fully developed. We started looking at opportunities to, to, you know, make that neighborhood nicer, frankly. That's, that's what it was. We didn't buy it with the eye towards development, we bought it because of the existing apartment building there.
Other questions? Mr. Jones?
I feel like a lot of your argument is, is hinging on, you know, the fact that this is, this is new construction, and it's better than what's existing. And with that, I, I think everybody here wholeheartedly agrees. But I think you also take that a step too far. You're pretty much saying that the historic district's regulations should apply less so to new construction, simply because they don't have cultural value. But I don't feel that that's what the historic district regulations really aim to say. What do you think of that?
So I, again, I just kind of go back to what the denial was at the HDC, which was, you know, brick is, I think, I can read the specific language, the basis for that denial. It was the, you know, the change of proposed material resulted in the absence of brick, and the removal of brick would not fit in the character of the area. And so I, I look at that as fundamentally as a siding issue, siding material. And again, I just reiterate, I, I don't see how the, how it can be possibly a, a public purpose that you want to promote, that any large building has to have brick on it to be a valid, kind of historically consistent.
I, I think I appreciate that argument, and I think it has merit, but I think the problem that we're having with the optics of this is that you've already been in front of the board, you guys discussed brick, it ended up being approved that way, and now we're back again solely because of what I feel like is the cost. And, and here we are again with the cost aspect. Mr. Det proposed that maybe we just do the lower level. And you don't even seem to want to take that compromise. You want it stripped entirely.
Are you, are you saying that the building is a, it kind of snakes around?
It would be three sides, with the last side buried, just like the other mill building that you mentioned.
So just a, like kind of a Long Elm Street?
Yeah, the low side of the building. It seems like the passive least resistance to just compromise.
Well, I would love to find a compromise, but...
I think it would look funny with brick like that, personally, but...
I mean, it's similar to that Main Street building that has a stone facade on the bottom and brick on the rest. It would just be clappard on the top and then brick on the bottom. You go from a third of the, two-thirds of the building being brick to 10%, I mean, I think that's a significant improvement in cost. I mean, is that something that you would consider?
So I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm just not sure of the, we haven't, we haven't crossed out that specific proposal, first of all. And second of all, am I even sure that, like, that this board can, can offer that compromise? I, I just kind of need a point of order, I guess. Like, can you...
So I would just remind the zoning board that this still has to go back to the planning board under the site plan regulations for the additional units, and the architectural review is going to be underneath the planning board. Either way.
Correct, correct. This board can put conditions on, if it would so choose to approve it, this board can put conditions on that approval, just like the HDC would put, would put conditions on. We could, we could do anything the HDC would do if it was before them. So if they came to the HDC with this proposal, the concurrent proposal, which they did, and the HDC had made a modification, and they agreed to that modification such as on one side, one floor, then that, that's within the power of the HDC, so therefore within our power.
Yes, but I would say that the planning board deals with architectural review regularly, so, and that's something...
Don't disagree, don't disagree.
And, and they could have additional comments put on this.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have, we do not have the power of the planning board, the planning board has to do their full function. We only have the power of the HDC. You'll say, Mr. Jones?
I...
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Mr. Hilton.
My understanding is that the, there's brick buildings in the HD, in the historic district, and there's also clapboard buildings in the historical district, correct?
Asking me, or asking the applicant?
Well, I'm asking everybody, because it seems like to me...
There is.
That's the issue. Can you have brick, or can you, you, to me, you can have both, because both of those are in the historic district.
Okay. You have a question for...
Is that correct? Can we have, you can have brick and you can have clapboard, as long as that's existing in the HDC area?
In general terms, yes, correct.
Okay.
That's something that, Mr. Chairman...
Yes.
That's something that, when we close the public hearing here, we're going to discuss this amongst ourselves.
Correct.
Thank you.
Good, Mr. Det.
To, to Mr. Jones's point of the change from a third of brick to no brick, have you costed out any other alternatives that would appear as a compromise?
So we considered kind of a, a concrete with kind of brick stamp overlay that was also, didn't work economically, at least on the scale that we were looking at. We also looked at, what was that thin brick called?
We looked at an ethos of like stamp, but you...
It's a fire hazard.
It's a fire hazard, so insurance is... And then there's another option, but it, it's, you know, it's like the Wendy's brick when you look at...
No, like concrete?
It's horrible.
Yeah. Now, but you've stated for the record that you will appeal this further if the decision is found fully unfavorable to you this evening, correct?
Fully unfavorable, yes.
Thank you.
Question for you. So, so I don't know if I read it somewhere, but is there any hard number on how much more the brick's going to cost?
In, in our application, or in our appeal, we stated as two times, that's more, but we stated as double.
So is there a hard number, cash value, dollars?
No, it depends, like, we haven't, we don't have a full construction drawing set yet. Like, we haven't priced out the, the bid. Like, that's kind of the issue, is that everything kind of, the whole project stops if we don't have, don't have a, a project that even looks...
Right, I mean, you can't come up with a foundation plan if you don't know what you're doing above it. You have to price it, you know, if we're doing brick, then it's a whole different foundation that has to support that weight. It's additional cost there. It's not just the brick that costs more. There's a lot more structural things that have to happen.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? Any last comments by the applicant?
I mean, I, you know, I don't think we're, we're willing to negotiate, but certainly, like, if you see a solution that can be achieved by...
Can you talk right into the mic, because there are...
Sorry, like, just kind of responding to Mr. Jones's question. You guys have the power to impose a condition, you know, leave it to us to appeal it or not. So if you think, you know, to, you know, just kind of like a Long Elm Street, that first floor is brick, and that's a fair compromise from your view, that's certainly in your prerogative, and we'll, you know, take further action as, as we see fit, I guess.
You'll choose your path.
Yeah, exactly.
As we see fit. Gotcha. Anything else?
Not from us. Do you have anything else from us, or...
No, what we're going to, what we'll do is we'll close the public hearing, you'll sit down, the board will, the board will debate it and then vote, so I just want to give you the last opportunity.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Closing the public hearing. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. You know, we heard from the public here on both sides of what they want us to go with.
Mr. Vincent, can you just hold what second?
I'd love to.
We need to discuss regional impact first, and if, if the board feels there's any regional impact through this, I for one don't. Does anyone see any regional impact? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
Do we vote regional impact?
Yes. Mr., go ahead, Mr. Hilton.
I'll second that.
Mr. Det. Okay, so, so what it is, so actually, the, the motion should be, we have, you have to have the official motion. Okay, so any, if you look in the regional impact, quote the RSA, page three. So if you could, could do the official motion.
I move that the appeal of an administrative decision by 85 Elm Street, Somersworth LLC, and 20 Green Street, Somersworth LLC, has, does not have potential for regional impact.
Okay, we have a motion, and, by, second by Mr. Vincent. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, which the motion is that it does not have any regional impact, raise your right hand. Okay, five zero. Mr. Vincent, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, we heard several people from the public come up, there were four, some were for, and some were against, you know, and, you know, let's, let me just, let me just go through a couple of them. Mr. Brooks came up, had some excellent, excellent concerns. However, the way I look at it, on his concerns were more like regulation type of changes that we might have to address here. Kimberly Shonan came up here and gave quite a few bullet points on some of the things that, to expect, and probably what was happening here. You know, I know her as a really good attorney here in town, she's lived here for several years. And I, I tend to, I tend to favor her. I mean, I came here with an open mind, that we do need housing, we do, we need housing. But then Mr. Brooks brought up, you know, Central Avenue, where they went in and they tore down this beautiful church, you know? And they put this modern building right up on the sidewalk. And if you ask the people in Dover, they hate it. They absolutely hate it. I'll be right honest with you, I came here to vote, vote favor of this, but now I don't know what I'm going to do. Because, okay, so that's that part. On the other hand, yeah, there is brick and there is clapboard in the historic district. So if we vote no, can they appeal it and win it another way? That's what I think of, you know? So, I mean, the points that Kim brought up was like on the money. It's like, you know, probably 95% all right, because you know what's going to happen here. We may have the Walmart apartment building that we don't want. However, I do feel for the other side of the line, so to speak, that we are in need of housing. And that district is really, and I don't mean any disrespect to the owners in that district, that district is very rundown. It's rundown. You know, in some cities, they may call it the ghetto. I don't, because people have to live wherever they have to live. Sometimes those slang type of names are put on that district, or a zone of the city. So we have to look at regulations and we have to look at what the people come out and speak for. I don't know what I'm going to do. I know we need housing, but I don't want to have an eyesore in that district either. And anything's better? No, not anything's better. It's not. We try to keep things looking in good condition as far as what we do zoning for, you know? Back to Mr. Brooks, right? With the, with the, the overlay, zoning overlay, right? Form-based codes, right? Kind of changes everything, kind of makes everything a, like a hodgepodge sort of. I don't want to ramble, I just wanted to tell you my thoughts, thank you.
Mr. Verda.
I, I would offer the following observations in, in no direct order and, and for that I apologize. Want to start with a little bit of history as I know it on that property. I think there is a legitimate argument, but let me start here. I think the housing crisis comes up often and I think it is a reasonable argument, but I think this board also needs to keep in mind that 125 or 150 units in Summersworth is going to have some positive impact and it is going to have some change to the housing crisis, but the housing crisis needs to be viewed through a regional lens. 150 or 200 units isn't going to drastically change the housing crisis and as Attorney Schoen highlighted, the reasons or some of the reasons for the housing crisis. I think we often hear that used as an argument for projects of varying sensibility and scope, and I just wanted to put that out there. Kind of going to the history of, I guess, as I know it of that area, I think you have to keep all of this through the lens of the fact that some of that has been blighted for a very long time. The Summersworth Hotel, Mr. Vincent would probably be aware of exactly when, but I believe was condemned by the fire chief close to 20 years ago. Some attempts have been made over that time to redevelop that property and nothing has started. This is the first time, I think, I've seen anything of coherence in that space. I do have concerns, that being said, there is some, I definitely some positive to redeveloping that area. I guess I do have some concerns overall that we're faced with a developer who, for whatever reason, is saying, "Trust us." And I think for them to come and present a, this is not a developer to my experience or knowledge, that this is their first project, I think, yes, there have been changes in cost, but to have no thought or that I am going to leave this with a thought that they had no reasonable idea of the cost difference from the beginning, I think that's unreasonable. I would like to see a compromise on this. I think it's, does have many positive aspects and I think it would improve the city, but I do think there does need to be some compromise respecting even the developer's first proposal.
Mr. Jones?
I think what makes this project so tricky to review is just the, the breadth of the arguments we've heard here. The, the appeal seems to solely discuss the siding. The minutes from the meeting on which it was denied solely seem to discuss the siding. But as Mr. Brooks pointed out, the problems with the, the entire permitting of the project seem to go much further than that. And I guess I just want to talk with the board, I, I mean, are we considering these as, as issues with the entire project or are we solely on the basis of what was denied for? Because the size being inconsistent, the parking calculations being waived, which I guess, and why, why did that not require variance if that's in the zoning ordinance?
Go answer it, Ms. Mears.
It's actually in the site plan regulations.
In the site plan regulations, okay.
And that was the planning board. So the parking...
So the planning board...
So the parking is not under the, our, under the HDC, that's the planning board. So we, we don't even talk about parking, we're not even addressing parking tonight.
Okay. And then...
Essentially, the, the, adding the apartments below is, is a use, again, that's the planning board and not the HDC or us tonight.
That's fine. So the, all the, if we, if we ignore all the other procedural errors because they were not cited and they're approved in the, in the appeal, then what we're left with is just the siding. Would you agree? So then the argument for the siding does seem to be economic cost and the purpose of the HDC does cite economic cost, but no figures were provided at all citing that economic cost being an issue. I feel that maybe if the board were provided with a cost estimate for different alterations of the siding, that might, that might be easier for us to then say, "Okay, that is prohibitively expensive, maybe we should provide some relief."
Okay.
If I may comment, Mr. Chairman? Good point there. You know, Mr. Brooks has stated that we have five criterias that sometimes we don't follow. Why don't we follow those criterias sometime to the T? Because it's one foot of something that may be on someone's, too close to their property, right? So we don't follow that. So we try to be, you know what? These regulations have been around since Francis Vincent, my father. And here I go again, right? Michelle, Ms. Mears, right? Here I go again, we're saying, you know what? We need, we need to tune this up. I've said it since I got here, but that's not what we're doing tonight. But nevertheless, Mr. Brooks has a really good point. So we either continue to drive off the path of the, of what we want to look at for our own ZBA rules and then we just grant things. This is my little spiel on that. However, I was going somewhere with it, but I got off on that little challenge there and I kind of, you know?
Okay, Francis.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I think we only have like a few paths in front of us. We either agree with clapboard, we agree with brick, we agree with a compromise, or we continue and ask for more information.
And if, can I reply?
In essence, though, if, if, for example, I think if, if the board denied it, they could, I think they could go back to the HDC with some modified version. Correct, Ms. Mears, or not?
If it gets denied?
Yes. So if the board denied their, the appeal?
Yeah, they could go back to the HDC or they can go to, we can go to court.
Correct, correct.
Right.
You have those options.
Those are our paths.
They are, they are their options, correct. Right. Hilton, you want to jump in?
Water's warm, might as well jump in. It seems like to me that the issue before us is brick or clapboard, and if both are in the area, why not?
Okay. All right, I'll add to this a little bit. So the project or housing or development is, you know, that's good, the city needs help, needs development. So, but this is a development in historic district, so that's why we're here, because it's, it's something in historic district. It, it's a pity that, and this property, in my belief, is probably part of the historic district because of the two existing buildings on it, but it is in the historic district. The only people that can change, only way to change historic district is the city council. City council would have to take, you know, would change the rules. So that's where we are. This building, and, and as I understand how the HDC got to where it was, is this building is quite large. This building is five stories tall, there's no other buildings in the area that are five stories tall. So what the HDC came through, their process, their thought process was if you, if it's a, if it was a smaller building, it'd be, it would be more like some, some of the buildings in the area that are, that are clapboard. It's a larger building, it's more like a mill building that are in the, in the historic district and therefore they wanted to, they thought that brick, the typical construction material for a mill building was brick. And that's why the historic district came to conclusion that they thought this building should have at least some brick. It's not, I mean, if you look at the drawings, it's not all brick, it's just some brick, some brick to do it. When I asked what made this building, existing building, fit into the historic district, I really didn't get an answer because the building that they proposed doesn't have any historic features to it. There's none, it's just a plain building, you could, you would build that anywhere. So we're taking the historic district and really throwing it away and not making, not, it's, it's no, that's now, now no longer historic district. So what, we need to, if we're going to keep the historic district, if the city believes in historic district, we should be making buildings, even new buildings, in historic district.
Right.
Histor, some, have some, some feature that makes it part of the character of the neighborhood. Good, Ms. Vincent.
Yeah, and thank you again, Mr. Chairman. And Dave Witham came up and talked about, yeah, new buildings that are in historic district don't even meet historic type of look. So it's like we're caught here, all of us, in a catch 22 in a roundabout way because it's like he's got merit too. You know, we, we put flat trim on. We don't do the decorative type of Victorian trim anymore that would probably take a person to make four weeks because of the cost. So this is so hard to, to try to get in my head to make a decision, you know? I'm stuck really right in the middle. Thank you.
Now you know the, the pain of the historic district.
Exactly. And, you know, to add, you know, we had the chairman come up and paint that picture for us. Thank you.
Mr. Verda.
I came in tonight sure that I was going to vote in support of the developer for the following reasons. I think generally speaking, the governed have to, are subjected to the choice of those who govern, sometimes to their short-term detriment in that we need to look at the downfalls of this against what it's going to do for the city. And I think that the one and most compelling argument I think the developer does make is the greater good here is development of that area. And I think ultimately we have to come down on something that is economically feasible in modern circumstances or it doesn't happen. And that's a hard reality. I think we look at what is the greater good here if I have to make the argument? Improving that area and longer term, putting something on the tax rolls? Or taking a chance that they lose in court? If they lose in court and then this continues to sit empty or something else happens with it, who knows? We don't have the purview to know what that is. I think further, the master plan of this city states that infill development happen for housing in the downtown area. That's exactly what this is. And further complicating this factor, I think, in this situation is you have very few parcels this large in the city that would allow this caliber of development unlike a Dover. There, there are very few spaces that would support this. Whether or not that is compelling enough to override the historic district, I don't know. And I think, not to get on my own hobby horse about the historic district, but at some point, I think the city council needs to take the buck and somehow say, "We're either investing in the historic district and we're going to directly start giving back to those people that live in the district and make those financial investments. And in some way and somehow, we're going to allow a, create a district that is economically prosperous for the residents. Otherwise, this is just an unnecessary economic burden and we're going to get rid of it." I think we've been walking that line for a very long time. I think I've heard that from the city council many times and, and I encourage the council to really look at the meaning of the historic district and the different sections and ask yourself, what is the greater good to be served? I would say my mind has been somewhat changed or affected by a developer or a presentation, I will say, that does seem to sit on this cost basis analysis. And I listened to Attorney Schoen, who has certainly argued complex cases, talk about the cost and said to myself, you know, this is a cost argument, and I attempted to parse out what that looked like. And a couple of us on this board tried to parse that out, and I think we got nothing from the developer that was satisfactory. And that is concerning because the development has to be financially sustainable and we do want to create quality, not just quantity. That would be, I guess, what I would contribute. Oh, one more point. I mean, I think the Queensberry Mill property has come up a couple of times in conversation, and I think a compromise on our end, wherever it goes, at the end of the day, the historic district seemed to approve everything else. We seem hung up on the siding, so let's find a compromise if we can, and then whatever the planning board does or doesn't do with it, it's on them, but let's be in reality that kicking this can down the road and taking it to court is going to have a cost. And I think at the end of the day, I'd like to see this happen in a way that's beneficial to everybody and by reaching a compromise, I think we are able to parse out how committed or uncommitted the developer really is to the betterment of Summersworth.
Mr. Jones?
All right, I think we're taking a little too broad strokes. So I think the issue at hand here is clapboard versus brick or both. And, I mean, what, what is the feeling of you all about what is the appropriate material? Because the building's approved, I mean, they could build the original approvals without any changes tomorrow. So the building size, I, I don't think is that issue. It's already approved, we're stuck with it. I think the only issue is the aesthetic appearance of the front. So do we feel that brick is more reasonable in this area of the city or do we feel that clapboard is better in this area of the city or do we feel that a mix of both is appropriate? I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, I would have to say that you, you probably oversimplified it a little bit because you have to look at also, you have to take in consideration of the size of the building. Because if you went strictly by the, as Mr. Brooks pointed out, if you went strictly by the standards, this building would have never been allowed because it is too big, it's too large for that area, it doesn't fit.
So you're saying that the compromise was to require brick so that it looks like a mill, disregarding the fact that it's on a hill?
Correct.
Such that that fits in better than just clapboard?
Correct. That's, I, I think that was the thought process of historic district and I, I think I would agree.
Yeah, then I think if we buy into that argument, then we need to require the brick if we want to uphold historic district.
Ms. Vincent?
You know, as I sit here and I, and we, I think more about this, I look across over there at the city of Summersworth, 125th anniversary, proud past, bright future, that's, that's the old Pearl's Bakery, which is in a historic district and is historically correct. So I think you're right about the brick thing now. I never thought I was going to come here and say that. But I do think also, because I'm not a fool, that this is going to be challenged, but that is another course for somebody else.
Yeah, that's fine, either way.
That's somebody else, like, you know?
If, if the, the brick is, is what allowed the historic district to bend their rules to allow a structure this large in this area, then I think that was a compromise that was worth doing to, in the pursuit of, of housing. I feel that maybe the historic district has already done enough and, and to, to bend further is too much.
I agree.
For the discussion. Here's Mr. Hilton.
Is that, was that compromise made by the historic district? Is that...
Well, as, as discussed by the, the historic district chair, that they, they, they said, is it going to be a two-story building or is it going to be a mill? And they said, basically, the, they came to, their belief was that they were going to treat it like a mill versus a two-story building.
Okay, thank you.
You put whatever weight in you want, I mean, that's just...
I would also want to note that with the raising of interest rates and with the cost of all construction going through the roof in the last two, two years, last year especially, I'm a plumber, water heaters went up 100%, over 100% last year. So the cost to the customer, if we want affordable housing, quote unquote, what everyone always talks about. Okay?
We know who pays the, I mean, if the building costs more, we know who pays the end costs.
The customer pays it all.
Correct.
So there's, there's a large increase in labor, there's a large increase in building materials. Everything has gone up, so, you know, the customer's going to pay on this one too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just would rebuttal against that a little bit. Okay, Van Tech or Plywood was $79 a sheet, now it's 25. So building costs have come up and down. Some stuff like plumbing stuff, I agree, it's up there 100%, but some stuff is coming down. You know, it's like... You know, it's like, that's the cost of doing business. What do you say, you know?
I would agree with that, but the customer ends up paying it. So we all know that. So, thank you.
Yep. Very good. Mr. Fedett.
I mean, I'd also like to make the point that we're kind of lumping clapboard into this grouping. And, and I don't want to get lost on the way, but Victorian houses with dental trim and window lintels are clapboard siding and so is what they're proposing. And I think this at some level does appear like they took the most cost efficient method possible. And I, I do see the point where there were a lot of, for good, for good, bad, or indifferent, there were a lot of compromises, a lot of concessions provided, including some tax breaks and whatever, that at some point, we have to say, we've gone far enough as a board. And I think the reason I keep floating a compromise is I think we also need to make sure that we respect the historic district at, at whatever level we can.
During the, for the process, if, if the board, as you say, shall deny that, they can still go to a compromise, go back to the HDC with a compromise if they so choose, or they can take it to court. That's their choice. Or they can sell the property. So that's their choice. So further discussion, are we ready for, or are we ready for a motion? Page four. Back of the director's com, minutes. Okay, Mr. Jones.
After review of the application, the file, and all the information presented to the board, I feel that the appeal should be denied because the HDC did not air and that brick was the correct route as the, you know, as the feel of the historic due to the size of the building. And I move that the request of 85 Elm Street Summersworth LLC and 20 Green Street Summersworth LLC for an appeal of the 62823 HDC decision be denied.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Second by Mr. Fedett. Discussion on the motion. The motion is to deny the appeal, uphold the HDC dispute appeal. See it not, any, no discussion? See none? The vote, vote on the motion, which is to deny. All, raise your, all, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Close. Five zero, motion carries. Appeal denied. All right. Moving on to new business.
Can we have five minutes, Mr. Chairman?
We can.
Thank you.
Five minutes, let the board, let the room empty out. Ready to start over again? I'm gonna start over again. PJ Land Development LLC is seeking a special exception from table 4A5 to allow a motor vehicle service, car wash on property located at 459 High Street in the residential/commercial District. Access is map 40, lot 60, ZBA case 132023. There is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Ms. Mears.
Ms. Crosley's actually.
Oh, Ms. Crosley, sorry.
I need my microphone. So as the chair indicated, the applicant is seeking a special exception to allow a car wash, which we define as motor vehicle services in our ordinance. The project is located in the RC zoning district, which allows it by special exception. There's an existing residential structure on the property, which is about 3.62 acres with about 507 feet of street frontage along High Street. If the special exception is granted, site plan review will be required with the planning board pursuant to the regulations. We define motor vehicle services as establishments primarily engaged in furnishing, motor vehicle cleaning, detailing, rental, leasing, parking services in, to the general public. This property has two, um, two reference from historic files. There was a veterinary animal hospital at one time within the existing structure. This was granted, they also received a ZBA approval to keep and treat horses on the property. I believe those uses are no longer active though at this time. They have addressed all of the special exception criteria. They're of the seven, I believe. And so the application is ready for the board to move forward into a public hearing and take action.
Any questions for Ms. Crosley? Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this has already been granted before?
No, that was a vet. This is for a car wash.
Oh, okay. So I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's right. I thought, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I did read that.
Any other question, Ms. Crosley? Okay, the applicant is, is already at the podium. State your name and why we should approve it.
Good evening. I'm Drew Garvin. I'm with Bowler Engineering. We're the civil engineer for the applicant, PJ Land Developers. Yeah, I think Dana did a good job laying out the, the project. It's actually, to be clear, it is 3.6 acres. PJ Land is, is purchasing the property, splitting it into two lots. And the lot, that one, the half of the lot, half if you will, it's about 2.2 acres, is going to be the car wash use. The other side of the property, which has the residential house, will be kept. It's, it's not gonna be maintained as a residence. It's gonna be commercial use to be determined. And that's not what's in front of you today. But the car wash use is. I want to be clear, this is not in an historic district. Couldn't resist, sorry. But yeah, other than that, it's a, it's a pretty straightforward use. I, I think it's, and I'm sure you've read the, the criteria, the seven points that you lay out. It's consistent with the uses in the neighborhood. There's, it's mostly commercial. In fact, I think this might be, there are, there are the residential uses still in the neighborhood, but this is the only residence, I think, in the neighborhood that it still exists. And as well, there's, there's motor vehicle uses. So I think, I don't think there's any issue, at least in my opinion, that it's consistent with the, with the street there that it's, that we're proposing.
Okay. You just want to briefly go through what, the seventh criteria?
Sure. Uh, would you like me to read them straight through or?
I don't, I just want you to add to or just clarify or just touch on them?
You know, most of it speaks to the consistency with the neighborhood, which I, which I just spoke to. You know, integrity, character, same thing. It's, it's consistent. You know, it's, I think it's helpful that the, the ordinance for this RC district basically explains it as, uh, to allow commercial development of transition areas where there is existing residential use, such as, such that the existing residential uses are adequately protected from non-residential uses. It is not the intention to, of the district to allow new residential construction. I think this certainly meets that with proposing a commercial use in the development while protect, protecting residential uses. We do, I don't have the landscape plan here with me, but we just filed with site plan review tonight. I dropped off the, that application in which landscaping is dealt with and providing kind of additional screening to the neighbor, neighboring residential use. The other criteria, you really deal with operations and how those, this use could, could or would affect that zone. It, it's been designed so that the proposed driveway lines up with the intersection across the street. There's full circulation, including bypass lanes in case people want to not use the car wash and, and bail out. And certainly all, it meets all truck turning for emergency vehicles, all those things that I, I think there is no, and there's not anticipated to be a big emergency use there other than, you know, for, for an emergency, you know, the rare emergency that might come up. There's not an unreasonable amount of traffic proposed. There's a long line in the site itself as designed to provide queue lengths for, you know, patrons that come in that want their car washed. I think there's, as you'll see on the site plan, it's got a fairly long queue length for it. And yeah, the, the last one, or six, I should say, is the, talking about burdens on the municipality. Don't anticipate it to have any burdens. In fact, it'd be a positive as far as tax revenue, what have you. And public health, I don't anticipate anything to be an issue of public health. I should mention all the cer, all the utility services are in line. That shouldn't be an issue tying in. This does provide a recycling system, reclaiming water system for the car wash use, which I think is a benefit as well and to minimize, you know, impacts to sewer. So, you know, all in all, again, I, I think it fairly easily and simply meets the, the seven criteria points as, as discussed and would be a benefit.
Okay. So we'll see if anyone else wants to talk and then we'll ask you back up for questions.
Sure.
Would anyone like to comment either for or against this application? Generally, opportunity. Okay. One back out. Questions for the applicant. Mr. Brooks.
The water reuse that you mentioned, you know, obviously, plastic recycling, we recycle, but it's a pretty minimal amount. I'm just curious, do you have any idea how much water you actually recycle through this process?
I cannot speak to the gallonage. I want to say, I believe it's a 75% water reclamation. So, you know, it's pretty significant. Obviously, it's, it's car wash water, so there is a kind of a tank and a gray water system that allows you to recycle it safely and cleanly. So yeah, I don't know if that is enough.
Do you have a figure on how many gallons it takes to wash a car?
I don't. I am not a car wash expert. I am a site designer, but I don't. I'm sorry, I don't.
But you're saying 75% of the water gets recycled?
Yes, that is used, you know, during the day.
So it's a significant amount then.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So I, I, this is kind of our quasi, because when we get these special exceptions, the board has to talk about. So you said, you submitted the buffer zone. So behind the property, it, it kind of, it kind of buffers on the, the woodland pond, not woodland pond, what's it?
Willen.
Willen Pond area back there. So I assume you, you guys are gonna put some kind of, on the, on the backside of the property, some kind of trees or whatever? We are. We're techno wizards.
I apologize.
That's all right.
So here's the lot, the residence. It's gonna be split in two. Car wash is proposed on the top side of this lot. There is landscaping proposed on the perimeter and some interiorly. But you can see the distance we're talking about from the pond and the existing woods, which we will not, we're not going into that, you know, it's not the full depth. So I, I think we're safely away from that, the pond and that area. But yes, we're aware of it and have addressed it appropriately in the site plan design.
Excellent. Now, this really isn't, doesn't hinge on approval or disapproval, but there are other car washes going in in the area and, and there's enough business to support this car wash?
Again, I, I am not a car wash expert or the, or, you know, aware of the, kind of the financial breakdowns. I know Title Wave is a frequent client of ours. This is a Title Wave car wash. They do this type of research and their answer is yes, or they would not pursue this project. But you're right, I think there's one, uh, there's one existing car wash, I believe, to the, just off this sheet.
Yep, just north.
Uh, right up here.
Yep. And there's one going in across the street almost.
Okay. I don't, not sure if I was aware of that, but...
I believe that's Penny Lane, Mr. Chairman. And one is that the old AMR, Openoy ambulance service? Right, right adjacent to Walmart.
Correct. Other que, questions for the applicant? Other questions? No questions. Last comments by the applicant.
Uh, no. I think I've presented enough. There's no more questions. I'm happy to...
Nope, Mr. Vincent.
No, I have a question. I thought it was done.
Nope. It's not done until we close the public hearing.
Okay, I apologize.
I apologize.
You all sat?
Yes.
So I'm gonna have you, have you sit down, close the public hearing. If, if you're all sat.
I am. Yeah, I'm good.
Both of you are all sat.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you.
Hold it. Are you gonna go regional impact? Are you, are you ready for regional?
Go ahead.
You can chump in. You did that to me last time.
I get it, I get it. Listen.
Mr. Brooks.
I move that the special exception request for PJ Land Development LLC does not have potential for regional.
I'll second that.
Motion, we have a second discussion. See no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, which says it does not, raise your right hand. Passes five zero. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting up with me. I appreciate that. And my question is to Ms., well, either, it's either Ms. Mears or Ms. Crosley.
Ms. Crosley.
Okay, Ms. Crosley. So yeah, 300 yards down the road, if that, not even that, there's a car wash on the other side. Is that because of different zoning?
No, they received a special exception as well and went through site plan approval.
I knew that. Thank you. And I just wanted everybody else to hear that. Thank you.
So this goes to the planning board or?
Planning board.
This goes to the planning board?
SRTC will review it, but it, as staff, and they'll provide comments, but the planning board will be the board that takes action upon the site plan.
And with that being said, it almost seems like a no-brainer here that we're gonna all vote for this. I would urge everybody to because of the fact is that there's no difference to this car wash than the one we approved. Am I correct?
That would be for you all to make determination.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that. I apologize. Could you please repeat that?
That's for us. Mr. Brooks.
Okay.
No, I, I can't disagree with that. It's basically the same zoning, same setup. Only thing that concerns me about this, and, you know, I don't think we can do anything about this, even if we did revamp our zoning, is, you know, how many, yeah, how many businesses do you need before one of them starts closing up and now we got, you know, staple buildings sitting around that's not being used? But again, not our business, so...
Right. But the city took, when the city, city had a certain business on High Street that they were getting too many, what they passed a zoning that they only could have so many within 500 feet or they had to be a thousand feet apart. That's what would have to happen.
And now the only pharmacies are crossing each other, not things within walking distance, you know, unfortunately.
And if I may add, it's also the same thing with storage facilities and car sales. It's their business. It's not this board's business.
They seem to keep doing the business. So... The only thing I would probably raise as a concern with this is, once you develop two-thirds of that piece of land, you do leave a house that you have to do something with. It's gonna be one of the last few house structures with a large piece of land left that isn't gonna be as reasonably developable as it is now. And again, I think that's out of the purview of what we're doing tonight. I, I just think it's unfortunate.
Yeah, since they are the landowner, they're taking that burden on.
And one more thing from a historical standpoint, since we wanted to make jokes, I believe at one time when that was Central Park, there was an area called the Bear Pit out back. So I guess history is everywhere.
All right. So if we can look at the special exception criteria and looking at the criteria as the applicant has discussed, it looks like, you know, this meets all the regulations that's discussed. It's not out of character for the district. It's definitely within the character of the district. It's commercial. We're trying to, High Street, we're gonna develop High Street. Explain how the proper operational use will ensure by the provisions and maintenance of the adequate and property of utilities, drainage. There's no special drainage. We've talked about the water recycling. They're gonna recycle water, so no undue strain. Explain how the potential adverse effects of proper use nearby, nearby properties. There is adequate buffer. There is, it is a commercial area, so the, the only thing you would have concern about is the one you just brought... have concern about is the one you just brought up. If that property was to be, stay as a residential property, then you could say that it's, it could be a burden upon it, but the applicant owns that property, so that's their choice to make, in my mind.
Right.
So they're taking that choice. Pedestrian vehicle traffic, they have addressed that, and the SRTC and the planning board will do any final review of that to make sure the egress is fine. Undue burden of municipal services, we talked about the water and the recycling, it's 75% of the water, and there's plenty of electrical power out there. And public, I don't think there's any public health, safety, or general wear fail concerns for the city. Mr. Fede?
I would like to state, though, that my understanding of the applicant's presentation is that the house will remain on a separate parcel, so it could at some point be sold separately, which would leave it as a residential use, but...
Correct. What I believe I heard him say was they were going to divide it, and they were going to look further, most likely non-residential development of that, but they hadn't decided what it would be yet.
Understood.
So, further discussion. Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve. After a review of the application, the file and all the information presented to the board, I feel that the special exception criteria has been specified because, because of the, it meets the five criterias, and I move that...
The criteria.
Excuse me?
Seven.
Seven criterias, I apologize. I mean, it's the seven criterias, thank you for that correction, I appreciate that. And I move that the request of PJ Land Developers LLC for a special exception from Table 4-A, 4.8.5, to allow motor vehicle service car wash on the property located at 459 High Street be granted.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Hilton. Any discussion on the motion? Motion is to approve, motion is to approve the special exception. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pass is five zero, you get your special exception. Moving on to the next item, item three, Bravo. Court Mendez is seeking a special exception from Table 4A2 to allow a veterinarian hospital use urgent slash primary care facility for dogs and cats on a property located at 10 Andrews Road in the residential, commercial RC District, assessors map 42, lot 33, ZVA case 142023. I'll open the public hearing, Ms. Mears. No, Ms. Crosley, sorry.
So, as you mentioned, the applicant's seeking another special, this is another special exception application. This is to allow a veterinary hospital specializing in walk-in urgent primary care for dogs and cats to be established within the existing vacant unit of 10 Andrews. It's actually only a portion of that unit, about 2,000 square feet. They were before the site review technical committee this morning for the minor site plan. It was approved contingent upon the special exception being granted by this board. Veterinary hospitals are allowed in the RC District, which, this is where that property is located, by special exception. The property has two historic files. There was a site plan approval in 2007 to construct an auto parts store and a coffee shop with associated parking, and there was conditions attached to that. And a zoning board of adjustment approval in 2008 for an equitable waiver for a sign that was erected within the setbacks. The applicant has addressed all seven of the criteria for a special exception. The application is complete for the board to take consideration on at this time.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Ms. Crosley. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just can't, in my mind, I can't, I know where it is. Where is this, where's this street? I read this this morning.
It's in front of Target.
That's right, right, that's right too, yeah. Cool. What's that?
Aroma Joes, yep. Next to the Aroma Joes.
Say no more.
Vacant auto parts.
Further questions for Ms. Crosley? The applicant, please come forward, state the case.
Hi, my name is Court Mendez. Thank you for having me to talk about Petwell Clinic and for consideration for the approval for a special exception. Petwell Clinic is an urgent care and primary care clinic. We do cats and dogs only. It is by, or there is no appointment that is required to come in and see us, so you can register online, so you can see if there's anybody that is in front of you, but, you know, you can walk in anytime that you'd like. Our hours are Monday to Friday, 11 to 7:00. We do not do any overnight for any of the patients that come in, but what we are is very similar to what urgent care for people is. So, if the dog or the cat needs surgery, or needs to be euthanized, we will actually refer out to other, you know, clinics, generally emergency. Again, we do minor illnesses, you know, ear infections, stomach, you know, issues, things like that, and we can actually do about 70% of what gets presented to an emergency room right in the clinic. Since we don't have surgery, or we don't have an operating room, things of that nature, our, the space that we need is very small. We only really need 600 feet. We have two treatment rooms, we have a reception area that actually also acts as our laboratory. If there are things that need to get sent out to an actual reference lab, we will do that, and we'll have the results the next day. In terms of what we're going to be doing for the changes to the building, it will all be interior with the exception of the signage outside. Again, I mentioned that it's two treatment rooms, a reception area, a bathroom. We are being given a little more square footage than I really need, and the back is just going to be empty storage unfinished. In terms of impact on parking, our staff is three. We have one veterinarian, a licensed veterinarian, which we have to have, state law requires for a lot of the procedures that we do. And then we have two assistants that are up front, so we'll have a need for three, just for full staff, and then we'll have sometimes, you know, on average, two to three patients in the building at a time. So the impact on the parking will, you know, hopefully be negligible on that building. I did want to address the need, what we're seeing, this is the second location, which would be in New Hampshire. The first one is in Manchester, and we're getting a lot of referrals from both the emergency rooms as well as other veterinarians. We hear commonly that the patients that are coming in, they're like, gosh, we've been going to our veterinarian for 10 to 15 years, you know, our dog or cat has an ear infection, and they won't see us for a week or two. We're so glad to see you guys, because they can come right in, and we'll take care of them. And again, going back to the footprint that we have, because it's so small, we don't have surgery, our costs are very low. So, similar to, again, to urgent, what urgent care for people is, our costs are very low, so people are, you know, happy that they're finding us for the convenience of it, and then they're even happier with the service, and then thirdly, they're happy with the amount of money that they're spending and the money that they're saving, quite honestly, so... that's really it, so...
You just briefly touch on the seven criteria for a special exception.
Uh, gosh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what those seven things are.
Do you want to take my package?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's good, all right.
So, going to number one, yeah, we don't, we don't have any special regulations for our use. Again, unlike a full-service hospital that, where they're doing surgery and they have a full operating room and all that equipment, you know, the only equipment that we have is a microscope, we have a scale, and computers, you know, laptops for the, and desktops for the, for the staff. In terms of, in terms of effect on the integrity of the building or the district, again, we're not doing anything that's, that's outside of our confined space, or, in terms of, you know, the type of waste or trash that we have, I believe there are two dumpsters that are on location, but gosh, we have, you know, one to two trash bags that maybe, that weigh maybe, you know, five, six pounds at the end of the day, so we really don't have any, any substantial medical waste or anything like that. Our impact on parking, which I addressed earlier, is pretty limited. You know, three cars for our own staff, and then, you know, patients that come in, which is, you know, generally, on average, you know, two to three patients a day, or, pardon me, you know, at a time. In terms of impact on utilities and drainage, we use very little water. You know, we have a bathroom on site, and we use three sinks, two sinks in the treatment rooms and one in the, in the reception area, but very, very little water usage there. In terms of electricity, it's just really the lights and what we use for our computers. Any noise or glare or odor, you know, we don't have any overnight patients, and we don't do surgery, so we're not doing any incisions or anything like that. So we've seen, you know, no impact on odor or anything like that in Manchester, and I expect the same here in Somersworth. In terms of pedestrian and vehicular access, the access that is actually exists there today would be the same that we would need. Our average patient stay is, you know, anywhere from 20 minutes if we don't have anybody in the queue, to, you know, an hour, and it's usually one car by one, so very little there. And there's sufficient parking that's right up against the building, so there's really no reason for people to even be walking across the parking lot in order to get to us. We would have our staff park on the side. And, oh, in terms of public health issues, we do not have any controlled substances on the, on the premise. We do not do any euthanization, we don't do any sedation, you know, no anesthesia or anything like that. I was talking to the police chief this morning, and he had asked that we actually put a sticker out in front so people do have understanding and not want to break in the building looking for that kind of stuff, which we're happy to do that. So I think that's all seven, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you all set?
Yes.
So I ask you to step aside, see if anyone else wants to, someone wants to come forward and speak, either for or against?
Thank you.
And then we'll ask you back up for questions. Anyone would like to come up and speak, either for or against?
Good evening, my name is Bill Staples. I live at 9 Cora Drive here in Somersworth. I'm here to speak in support of Petwell Clinic. They provide an outstanding service. I personally take my animals there from Somersworth to Manchester, and with, with the fees that they charge, it's actually feasible for me to drive there and back. I don't spend as much money as I would in, in a other local veterinary clinic. What little bit, I know, and I've met Court, he's an outstanding individual, he's very involved in the community in Manchester, and I would expect he would do the same here. They would be a wonderful addition to our community, and I believe this is something that would be an added value for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
When I attend a meeting, I feel compelled to stay until the end, so I might as well have another whack at the pinata, as they say. So, I think this is the simplest...
And you are who?
I think, Dave with them.
Oh, thank you.
Still. Thank you. I think this is the simplest one you've had tonight, right? So it's an existing building, the use is actually a bit lighter than the automotive parts facility that used to be there. I think the parking is adequate. I am glad to now connect the dots. I read about this in the paper, and it said in front of Target, which I guess it is, but I was thinking in front of the Target building, separate building, I'm like, why is that minor site plan? Why is that not coming before the planning board? I now understand everything. And to the point, we have two cats at 10 Rulo Drive. One of them was ill over the weekend, actually last week. Turns out to be a sinus infection, but we didn't find out till today because we couldn't get into the vet.
Look into the mic.
So, so my wife brought the big kitty, I don't know what's name, it's the bigger one of the two, to the vet today, and that helped it out, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Wright out, 138 Rocky Hill Road in Somersworth, soon to be Whippawell Way, hopefully. Speak in support of it. I think it's a wonderful use of a long vacant space. I have family connections to the process and people that are running it, and just feel it's going to be a quality addition to the community. And how can you go wrong? It's right next to Aroma Joes, and the traffic is, it's all set up, it's ready to roll, and it will be a perfect addition to the community. And I think that it's a, it's an aspect of veterinary care that I had not known about until I learned about it through a family member, and it makes sense. And so I hope that you will just move this along, friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, will the applicant please come forward? Questions for the applicant? I have a question for you. So, it has to do with criteria number seven. Now, so you don't have any controlled substances, are you going to generate any medical biological waste, and you have adequate ability to deal with it?
I mean, we, you know, we use needles and syringes, which we have small sharps containers for, and we do work with Stericycle, which is a medical waste company, and they come really, I think, once a month, maybe. I mean, it's just a small little sharps container, but, and we do draw blood, you know, for the reference lab, but that gets sent out, and then that does not come back to us, so we don't really dispose of it. We do some urinalysis, and that's usually just a couple drops on a slide. That's really about it.
Other questions for the applicant? Last comments by the applicant.
You know, again, thank you for listening to me, and in terms of historic, this was a comment that was made, impact, the building is brick, so... But anyway, thank you for, you know, allowing me to talk, and I hope it gets approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, that is my close public hearing, comments, discussion by the board. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again, yeah, I think this is a...
Did you jump, or you're going to, you're going to take care of the first order of business?
Well, okay, so let me explain this real quick, okay? I would love to take care of the first order, but I don't know how it's presented here on this sheet, because my sheet doesn't have that on it. So, regional impact, what do I read, like, per RSA 3650?
Let Mr. Brooks take care of it. He'll take care of it for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I move that the special exception request for Court Mendez does not have potential for regional impact.
Okay, so we have a motion to a second. Second, Mr. Fede, get any discussion on that it has any regional impact? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to, that it does not, raise your right hand. It does not. Mr. Vincent, would you like to talk now?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, you know, it's like, what a great idea, you know, to have something different finally in the city. I mean, yeah, we get vets here and there, but to have a, like, a ready care for animals, that's a great thing. You know, I don't want to get into my own pet story, but my wife was tripping the dog the other day, yesterday, and cut the dog's back leg. A little sore, no big deal. We're not going to come see you, because you're not ready, but I think the board should vote for this. I think this is a really good thing.
Further discussion by the board. Mr., nope, okay, just in general, I would say based on the discussion by the applicant that it meets all seven criteria. Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again. I'm going to make a motion to approve after reviewing the applicant and the file and all the information presented to the board. I feel that the special exception criteria has been specified because of the seven criterias have been met.
This time it's five.
What's that? I was going to say nine, but I didn't do it.
And seven is right.
Thank you. And I moved that the request of Courts Mendez for a special exception from Table 4A2 to allow a veterinarian hospital use urgent primary care facility for dogs and cats on the property located at 10 Andrews Road be granted.
Okay, we have a motion to a second. Second by Mr. Brooks. Discussion on the motion. The motion is to approve the special exception. The motion is to approve the special exception to allow a veterinarian hospital at this location. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes five zero. Okay, moving on the agenda, granted. Any other new business come before the board? Ms. Crosley, or should I go to Ms. Mears first? Who wants first?
I don't have any. We are looking for people on the zoning board to serve on the housing audit, so if there's anybody that's interested in looking at allowing for more housing, we're probably going to have a meeting in November, then we can send that out.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
A new business from the board.
Sign me up for that.
There you go.
I'll sign up as well.
Why, you'll get more than you want. Look at that. What an area.
I don't know.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Second by Mr. Fede. All those in favor of adjourn, raise your right hand. We are here by adjourn.